All right, okay, we're one minute over. All right, well, I will call our work council, oh, sorry. I will call our work session to order. And it is a joint planning commission and city council work session. And the date is June 14th. And I will pass it over directly to community development director Melissa Pederman to introduce their missing middle housing.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the planning commission, city council. This is the third work session we're having about our missing middle housing. So I'm just gonna go quickly over kind of the background, how we got here, in case you missed one or both of those meetings, and then tell you where we're at now. So the point of all of this is to align our zoning code with our comp plan. Our comp plan speaks to these missing middle housing types. It talks about allowing duplexes and triplexes, lower density multifamily in the low-density residential area. So that's why we're starting with this, because it's the largest of the categories in our zoning code. And we really want to honor the work that went into that plan. You know, it was an eighteen-to-two-month, two-year process. A lot of work, a lot of feedback. We need to bring our code into compliance with that. And we have an obligation to allow development up to the prescribed limits that are discussed in that plan. As a recap, missing middle housing is this housing that's between the detached single-family and the larger multifamily. Those are kind of the predominant developments that go on in Richfield now. We've got a large base of that single-family, and we see a lot of the higher-density housing. We do not have a lot of opportunities in the middle. There is a precedent in the city for that. For a lot of years, as we were developing, duplexes were allowed throughout the community. And then, as other things came in, like racial covenants and things like that, duplexes were also outlawed in a lot of the community. Duplexes and this missing middle also offer opportunities for wealth building. There's research that talks about the percentage of duplexes that are owned by investors, individual investors, and it's upwards of seventy percent. So this really is an opportunity for someone who maybe couldn't qualify for a mortgage on their own to have an income property alongside. And also, for, again, smaller investors versus larger developers. Our process started with this academic exercise. Just do the math, figure out how to bring those single-family lot sizes down to allow the density that our comp plan prescribes, which is up to seven-point-four units per acre. So we did that math. We presented that introduction to you in March. I think everybody is on board with that. It's about a six-thousand-square-foot lot and a forty-five-foot width minimum that we would be changing to. As part of that discussion, we heard an openness to expanding permissions for duplexes and consolidating the R, single-family district, and the MR1, which is our two-family district. So that's what we talked about in March. In October of last year, we came back. We introduced those lot size changes, and we previewed our visual preference survey. This was a means to get at public input and talk about how to really knit these new uses into the fabric of our neighborhoods. What we heard, several policymakers indicated an openness to even greater allowances for duplexes, so long as form-based regulations help to manage that integration. The general consensus was that form-based rules should apply to all homes in the district, not just single-family, or, I'm sorry, not just duplexes. We put out the visual preference survey in January. We publicized it a lot on social media. It was primarily electronic. That is the way we got our feedback. One hundred and thirty responses came in. We didn't collect demographic information on that. And I think most of you took that survey, but it asked people to provide input on building size, the entries to the homes, parking, and overall design. We did not, with your feedback, we didn't specifically ask folks if they approved of duplexes, because our comp plan already says, "We approve of duplexes." We didn't want to put that question out there. But generally, we still get a lot of feedback that says, "I don't want those." We didn't in this case. I don't know if that's just a function of who decided to take the survey, but we didn't get a lot of, "This is the most horrible thing we've ever heard. Why are we even talking about duplexes?" And now, with the feedback from the visual preference survey and the previous two work sessions, staff has discussed internally a recommendation to allow duplexes on all lots in the single-family districts. This is a change from what we talked about at previous meetings. We had talked about whether or not we wanted to allow duplexes on the busier roads, arterials and collectors, and on corners, and then adjacent to commercial uses or more intense uses. You know, after we've gone through this exercise and thinking about how things will change in these form-based regulations, staff has really come to the conclusion that if you want this to be a policy that actually can make a difference in Richfield, then you have to be as permissive as you're willing to be, as permissive as possible. There's nothing, and we'll go through these design recommendations here, but there's nothing in here that leads us to say that a duplex is not going to be okay in the middle of a block in a neighborhood. You know, we already allow ADUs on any lot in a neighborhood. This isn't, it's like a half step forward. So, and we're gonna go through again here some updates to the code to ensure that the least desirable features that people picked out and ones that some folks might associate with duplexes are prevented. So this is just an overview of that visual preference survey. We wanted to make sure that you got to hear what feedback came in. This is about building size in particular, and this also illustrates how we mixed in duplexes and single-family to the survey in one question. We didn't say, "What do you think about duplexes that look like this? What do you think about single-family?" We just mixed them all in. You can see that the top three in this image are all duplexes, and those were the highest-rated homes in this particular group. And the one in the bottom right, that single-family, was actually the least popular. You know, I think what you're actually seeing in this is the survey favored side-by-side duplexes rather than stacked, but it could have just been a preference for one or single-story homes, which is a lot of Richfield. There's already a height regulation in our single-family district, and we wouldn't recommend any reduction to that or adjustment just for duplexes. But you could, if that's something you're worried about based on this feedback, you could use a prevailing height or a height averaging to ensure some more consistency on a block. Again, I don't think that's something that we would recommend. What we see in our other programs is that what really helps a new home to blend into the neighborhood is preserving the mature trees. You know, you can put a new, big, two-story house on a block, but if they've got a nice, mature tree in that front yard, it fits in just fine. So our recommendation would really be to continue to work with developers to protect mature trees rather than put an additional height limitation on. There are also other things, if you were worried about stacked duplexes, where you could increase the, or limit the maximum building width or increase the minimum lot size for a stacked duplex. Again, that's just adding additional space on the sides in relation to the height. But we have two-story houses throughout the community. So, from a staff perspective, I don't think we're going something like that.
Really, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was not totally sure if this is relevant here, but the thing I'm thinking of with building with, I mean, we already have side setbacks. So the possibly side concern I have is if someone has a double lot, do we, can they currently build to the same setbacks but across two lots?
They can. There is not a maximum width of a home. But there are, if you're, are you specifically thinking about a duplex? Like, if someone could build?
Honestly, no. I'm more worried that someone would build a mansion.
A really long house? Who could do that?
Yeah, so if someone has a single-family lot and then acquires another lot next to it, are they able to tear down and then use the two lots as if they were one? Or would they have to combine those parcels in order to do that?
You have to combine the parcels, but that's just an administrative.
Okay. So that situation could be, I don't know if anyone built a McMansion in Richfield, but that could be a possibility, if someone bought two single-family homes next to each other?
It could be. Especially the market as it is right now, I don't think that's likely. But yes, in theory, it could happen, yes. Oh, sorry, go ahead. No, I was gonna say, so if you'd like, you could put, you could consider or ask us to look at just an overall maximum width of a home. You could also, something like that. So something to think about as we go through the rest of these.
Any other questions?
Just two questions about the beginning. So, to be clear, the recommendation is not that they be conditionally permitted, but permitted by, right, if they meet the regulations, there's no public hearing. Kiss approved, just like any single-family home.
Correct.
Okay, since that was such a discussion point. And then also, to be clear, we're still gonna exclude the low-density residential district from these changes, right? We're still talking only about the regular R district?
The R district is a zoning district. The LDR is a comp plan.
Sorry, I mean, R1 or R1A, whatever, is the Woodlake area, that would still be excluded?
Yes, we're still talking about excluding R1. Talking about combining R and MR1, so that's the, but leaving out the R1, which is kind of that legacy large lot area around Woodlake.
Questions?
We asked about entries, doorways, and porches. You know, in general, people thought these were kind of all okay. The range of approval was from, you know, ninety-seven percent to over sixty percent. The, there was no strong preference, although there were some for a single front door. Those rated highest. Some possible things to consider related to the entry, you know, they did not, our feedback didn't suggest that we should require a porch or we should require a stoop. There wasn't a strong preference for something like that. But we could include regulations related to the doors. And I think staff is thinking of recommending these. Require an entrance on two sides if it is a corner lot. So if you have the opportunity to make it look like it's two separate homes, then why don't you do that? If it's in with the neighborhood, looks nice. Alternatively, if you're on a corner, you could have a single entrance that's split in two, on the interior. We talked about restricting to one main entrance on the front. Again, that would be a one-main entrance vestibule, and it would split inside the home, so it would look like a single door. And then, if an entrance is on the side, and there was an illustration of this in the notes section of your packet. So if there was an entrance in the front and an entrance on the side, that entrance on the side would have to be set back a little bit of extra way from your lot line, so that you're not opening and closing your door quite as close to that neighboring home. Suggestions to think about there?
Members, stop over. Lot line, so, see, if this is the lot, is it set back from like the street side or from the neighbor's?
This is from the neighbor. It's from the side lot line.
Okay.
If there's a door on the side, if there's a primary entrance to one of the units on the side, we would ask either that that portion be inset a little bit farther, or if it's on the driveway side, it makes no difference, because the driveway is providing that extra distance. For parking, the favorites here were generally garages in the rear. And this, you know, obviously, I think everyone knows that those prominent "welcome to my garage" type homes were not favored by anyone. They were the worst-rated. Clear dislike on those. So to address that, we're suggesting that we stick with existing driveway width requirements. Right now, we allow a twenty-foot driveway, and that would be the same. You can have a duplex. If you need a double garage, you're gonna need to build it in the back as a detached garage and still have a twenty-foot driveway leading to that. You wouldn't be able to, you know, build like this one in the lower right here, where you've got that double-width driveway and four-car garage there in the front. And then also, just minimizing the prominence of garages, so limiting the amount of the front-facing garage, this is if it's attached, to fifty percent of the house. So when you're looking at the house, only fifty percent of that front facade can be taken up with garage. There are some newer homes in Richfield that are going up that don't meet this. So this could be an adjustment to some of kind of the standard homes that have gone on in Richfield. When you've got that two-car garage and a smaller porch, you're not meeting those proportions. So this, you know, this could cause some adjustment to that. And then, to prohibit protruding garages, or now houses, some folks call them, require the attached garage be no further than, toward the front line than the habitable portion of the house. And so that means that if this is your living space, your garage is not coming out here. Again, it's not "welcome to my garage," it's "welcome to my home." Minneapolis and, I think it's Roseville, allow five feet in front of the habitable area. That can allow this area here to be a porch or a stoop. So it's still sort of active or living space. So that's something to consider, whether you would want to be more consistent with what Minneapolis is allowing or just say, "habitable area of the house." In terms of overall design, the bungalow and craftsman look was obviously much preferred to the garage look. And we didn't get a clear direction from this. We really thought it was more a proxy for size and garage. Again, we thought that's what people were voting on. If we have specific concerns about design, we do have design elements built into our Richfield Rediscovered program that talks about specific materials, window openings, requiring them on all sides, the articulation of the building, and some roof design things. That does add to the complexity of the review for the project, and it can often add costs. So we're not specifically recommending them, but if you have specific concerns, we do have a program to look to for some ideas. So, again, just to cover our recommendation, it is to, at a bare minimum, reduce the lot sizes to match the comp plan. Beyond that, we, staff, would recommend allowing duplexes by right throughout the R and MR1 districts. So that is the majority of the city. To limit, some regulations to limit that garage prominence, that was really the thing that stuck out for us in the feedback that we got from the community on that visual preference survey. Adding an additional setback for a side entry to a duplex and talking about corner lots with one entry or one entry per side. And then, also, as we were going through this and just thinking about affordability and what are we trying to achieve here, I think our recommendation would be to reduce the requirement for a garage to one stall. Right now, the requirement says that you can, you can build, with a new home, you either build a two-car garage or you build a one-car with space for a second stall. You know, again, looking to maximize opportunities for people to build homes, we think that, we think that most people will still build a two-car garage. We get a lot more requests for three-car garages than we do for one. But to allow people that flexibility, that if that, it makes their home more affordable and possible for them to build with one stall, then we should allow that. Yeah, so then, some feedbacks, just next steps. I'm ready to hear from you on where we are and where you are.
I really appreciate the work that was done on this and really was excited to see that you were recommending or staff was recommending that duplexes by right. I really support that. I don't have a concern with one or two entries on front-facing. Like, that wouldn't bother me, but I do appreciate the side yard setback for an entrance with, for a side yard setback. I appreciate that you said that you wanted to make this as permissible as possible, and I'm curious if you can help me do, like, realistically, with our Richfield lot sizes, how are people going to be able to do a duplex on our lots? Like, it doesn't make, like, I'm not, I'm having a hard time understanding how realistic someone, how realistic it would be for someone to build the duplex on most of our residential lots.
Right, so we did do a lot of research. There is research coming out of one design firm in particular, Nationally Opticos, that talks about how to do a side-by-side, how to do stacked. And on a six-thousand-square-foot lot, you can make a duplex work. That said, a lot of Richfield is ten-thousand-square-foot lots, and you can very easily make a duplex fit on a seventy-five-foot lot.
And is a side-by-side or a stacked one more likely for our lots, do you think? Or both?
I think both are reasonable. The stacked, you know, if you go down to a forty-five-foot lot, if you would go down to that lot minimum, which, again, we're fully built out, we're developed, we're planted, you're not gonna get a whole lot of lots that are forty-five feet. If you take away twenty feet for a driveway, maybe twenty-five by the time you get landings and things in there, stacked is gonna be your only option on that lot. I suppose maybe you could do a front back. You know, but this has historically happened in a lot of cities. This has happened in Minneapolis. This happened where I grew up, in Milwaukee. My grandparents lived in a stacked duplex on a, I think it was a forty-foot lot. So this, they had an alley. So on our blocks with alleys, this is more likely to work. So there are different parts of the community where different styles will work. The HRA does own a lot where we would like to do a demonstration project, and we would like to work with someone to build a duplex and kind of be a guinea pig for the community and show, "This is how this can fit. This is how it can work." It'll also help us to test our regulations. As we go through the process, does something here not work? Do we need to tweak it?
I do, and wanted to say, I also really liked that the garages are in the back of the house. I liked that. And the idea of massing and like building size, like, I hear what you're saying in that, and then your comments about a stacked duplex makes me, like, how that works in a resident, or in a single, like, in our neighborhoods. A test site would be really interesting to see how that works.
Yeah, and the stacked is just gonna look like a two-story house. It's gonna look like the two-story houses that we are building now.
And some of them, I think, are...
Look out of place, so. Some of them look really big. Again, I would say that if you can preserve a front yard, big tree, that makes a lot of difference, yeah.
Just a couple of things. First off, I really generally like the direction staff has gone here. I think you did a really good job. I think this also maybe allays some of the concerns I heard about the visual preference survey. I think people thought they were gonna like get this like HRA regulation of like, "These are the two house styles you're allowed to build in Richfield." And it wasn't like that at all. It was actually a really useful exercise to find out what was important to people. So the two things I guess want to give feedback on, the front entries, especially when I was like, walk, just walking around Richfield, seeing all the ramblers that have like a door on their breezeway and a door on the front of the house, like, I don't, it just seems so normal already. I don't see any reason to restrict that. And I do worry when, although the corner lot thing is nice, on some of those fifty-foot lots, that that could be really burdensome to have to do it around the corner and then lose that space for the setback. So I prefer to allow that. The garage prominence thing, I think it's rated, if I just had, you know, a car block, I would love to just say everything has to be detached garage in back, but I know attached garages are a popular entity, and that's kind of a big ask for people. So I think this is a reasonable middle ground. I would ask to just ring for discussion. We didn't require garages at all until like nineteen ninety-five, I believe. Like, almost all of Richfield was built prior to a garage requirement. I would suggest that we just not have a garage requirement at all. As you said, I think most people will choose to do, you know, a two-car garage, but if somebody lives off an alley and they just want to do a parking pad in back, I don't, if my neighbor does that, I don't feel like I'm harmed by that. And I would prefer to not require a garage at all, knowing that, again, in most cases, it's winter, it's Minnesota, people are going to want it. But again, thinking that, like, ninety percent of the homes in Richfield were built without this garage requirement, and we're really getting anything by having it at all. So I'm curious, if anybody's thinking about that, my feedback would be, I think we should just get rid of that, but other than that, I really like the direction here.
Folks want to respond to that?
I guess, what's the compelling argument to have it? Like, you said it's by choice, like, I think ninety-nine percent of people will want a garage, but if there's no harm, I don't see a compelling argument to require a garage.
Somebody wants to build one, and that's the thing that prevents them from being able to. That seems like a realistic scenario.
Especially if you're trying to fit a duplex on a smaller lot, and you have a little bit more land with setbacks and things like that to add more space for the home.
Fine, I agree with everybody, and I think for the person who's trying to build and for whom that makes a difference is probably the person we should be most accommodating to.
I will say, I'd like to ask our environmental health division to weigh into that one. My concern, without having any sort of requirement, and maybe it's a requirement, if you don't have a garage, you have some sort of larger storage shed, is that you're gonna end up with people storing all their stuff just outside.
It's like a reasonable compromise to make some other storage.
Members, stop over.
Yeah, I could live with that, as long as there's someplace to have the storage. That could become an issue.
Oh, it's already an issue with some neighbors.
It is. I think, again, if you're building a new house, I think it's unlikely that you're not going to put some kind of garage there. But there are, there are storage needs when you live in a snowy...
I was just gonna say, the other thing I thought of is, in general, I think it's fine. I think the argument against would be like, if people think that then that lot would be useless going forward, like, if they don't, if they don't, if they not only don't build it, but they don't leave room for one, are people gonna wanna buy it? I'm not really too concerned about it. But the other technical thing I thought of is, I think, our, like, where you can store your garbage bins code is based on your garage, isn't it? Or is it just the house?
I think it's behind the front line of the house. But I can double-check that.
Can I respond to that? Do you think it does decrease the value of the home, or at least like the attractiveness of a home? Well, you do see it a lot in Minneapolis, you know? And then, Councilman Troutman, when you were saying like, who's building the home and for whom? Are you, I guess, is the situation like an investor or someone building home for tenants and then kind of removing the opportunity for them to have a garage? Is that kind of your...
No, I was thinking that it's gonna be the smaller investor, it's gonna be the owner-tenant investor that would probably be most likely to have a cost consideration for a garage, that those folks are just trying to build something. And so, I just, my own personal preference to make, to make things administratively easy, you know, to lower the burdens for folks that are doing that.
A question, you said there's a lot of houses either that have just been built or currently being built that are half garage and half rest of the house?
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're probably more like sixty, forty. So sixty percent garage, forty percent.
So if we make this change, is it anybody who has not cleared the permitting process, right, starts then?
Right, it's anybody who hasn't submitted. Though, once the ordinance is in place, anybody who submits a building permit application after that would have to meet it. And we would, if there was someone in process, we would work with that person to make sure that, if they were mid-design and we were going back and forth, we would work with some... If they were mid-design and we were going back and forth, we would work with someone on that. But yeah, coming in afterward. Another, another consideration as we're talking about that 50%. You know, on a one-story house, that's a really obvious measurement, right? You've got just a rambler, here's the garage in here. But on a two-story, if you have living space above your garage, I would, I would say that then you have not exceeded the 50%.
Oh.
House. But I just want to, I just want to bring it up before people. Does everyone know what I'm talking about?
Thank you. I understood that to be my way. But I know, I don't think a couple of bonus ring up on a garage like niggates the effect of the garage door. I mean, the only trade-off I see with that is that like a 50-foot lot effectively could not have a two-stall front garage. Right, because it's going to be, yeah. So I realize that's a limit, but there aren't that many 50-foot lots without alleys anyway. There are not a lot of new front driveways. I don't know. It seems like a reasonable ask. Obviously, people have other options to accommodate a two-car garage, like in back. I would prefer a D by width. I think 50% is still a lot of garage.
Okay. I just want to make sure as we write the rule that we're writing it the way everybody would understand it. So it'd be 50% of the width rather than 50% of the facade.
I wanted to jump in on before we move to continued questions. I'm fine with, with not having a minimum of a garage. Well, I, I mean, in exploring it, I would like to see what staff say first and kind of make a decision. From Leila?
To move on to other questions, I would echo what others have said. To me, the like one entry versus multiple seems moved. That seems like an unnecessary extra restriction to add in. And yeah, I would, I would agree. I fully support duplexes by right. I actually, I was, I was having the opposite direction concerning Commissioner Sturza. I wondered if there's places where really we should be allowing duplexes. That, I mean, I've lived in a few duplexes and it's really not hard to fit a duplex on a normal-sized lot. And if it is a larger than normal lot, I wonder if we should allow a triplex or fourplex. I don't know if we have any really in Richfield yet, but that's maybe.
We lost one by one road park.
Okay.
There was one, we just tore one down.
Okay. But that's maybe a separate conversation. I just will say my, my biggest thing I'm happy to see is the limiting garage conversation. I would say, to me, I'm okay with what's been said about the width, limiting it that way. But I think the prominence thing is really huge. I see a lot of, frankly, a lot of the Richfield rediscovered homes, at least the standard model on the east side of town, is that like large prominent garage, tiny porch setback. And yeah, so I, to me, I guess I would be open to, I guess I wouldn't necessarily want just an open allowance of a five-foot setback, but I would consider the porch. If they want a porch and it's even with the garage, I would be okay with that. I don't know how hard it would be to write that specifically, but yes, I think limiting garages that are protruding past the rest of the house will make a big difference.
Larry?
I just want to point out the rich where rediscovered plan you're referring to isn't compliant with the width, but it does have exactly the porch that you're describing. To me, it seems like kind of weak T where it's like the porch comes out like six inches past the garage, but the actual front door is like five feet back. So I mean, you can look at those houses, those are exactly what we're describing with the porch. And to me, that's just not good enough. Or it's like not the same as having the front door, at least level with the garage door.
Other thoughts on the recommendations from staff and folks who haven't?
About the side entry setback, so I'm thinking like in a single-family situation where, you know, often the side door is the access to the garage in the back. And I'm curious like how much of a disturbance is that actually because there's no specific setbacks for that where that's the main traffic, you know, entering the home? If like 10-foot or is necessary or?
So I think in most of those cases, when it's the access to the garage, it's along the driveway. And so the driveway is already providing that additional setback. I think what we were envisioning was if there was a house with alley access. And so the house really truly extended to those side setback lines.
Which is what, how many feet?
The minimum would be, what is the setback?
Yeah.
Five feet.
Okay.
And so this, what we, what we were noodling on was an additional five feet so that there'd have to be, you know, there'd be. Do you care if I draw? So if this is the neighbor's house, here is the lot line. New house that's being built. If there is a, if there's a door, this is my feet, if there's a door here, it has to be set in. So this is the actual swing or not. So your door is coming out here and you are exiting right there.
The building could still extend to five feet, but as long as the door is still.
Just the actual door would have to be a little bit farther back. I don't know how often that would come up, but we were envisioning a side entrance and someone swinging their door and having a stoop or sitting on their stoop.
Sure.
And have, and being like within a foot. And that just may not be a great place to. Now, so I don't know that five feet gives you a whole lot more, but.
And the stoop can extend past the setback?
Yes, the stoop can extend into the setback. There are encroachment rules related to stoop. So the stoop can actually extend, I think, an extra 12. Maybe 18 inches setback. So, yeah.
Are there comments from folks who haven't commented on the initial recommendations from staff?
I would, I like the fact that you could have duplexes by right. I think it's fine if you can fit.
And I just want to support what we've talked about, duplexes by right and making sure garages aren't prominent. I just really appreciate helping with this videos.
I'll just add the same. I think these are awesome recommendations. I'm really excited for this. And then I did, there were comments on maybe I'm with more than one door in the front. That's fine for me as well. I'm very excited to see this in Richfield.
I was curious, earlier, there was a stat we heard about 70% of duplex owners are individual investors.
Right, over 70%, yeah.
From, from social media and the news, it just sounds like everything's owned by big corporations now. And so I was, I was surprised to hear that that's not the case.
I think, I mean, that stat's a couple of years old. I think it was a 2018 number, but it's not, it's not a super old number. But yeah, it does offer a lot of people individual wealth building opportunities. Yeah.
I didn't know if this was an appropriate time to ask the question or not, but are there ways to encourage individual owners versus outside corporate investors and things like that?
Are HRA dollars that are eligible for duplexes and projects like this?
Well, since we haven't approved these rules, not yet, but our first-time homebuyer could be paired with this. And I imagine that we would, if this was approved, we would look to use some of our dollars to help encourage this. Just like we've targeted ADUs with some of our HRA dollars and, yep.
Would it be, I'm sorry, just to close that loop, it would be only individuals, not corporate developers that would have the opportunity? Or would it be, you'd have to, to live there? Would it, could it be even if it was a smaller developer that there'd be a residency component, I would assume, for the duplex?
We'd have, we'd have to, I mean, the first-time homeowner, you have to live there.
Yep.
And all of our other programs right now, yeah, we don't have any that allow you just to build an investment property.
I assumed that, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, if we were going to set up a program that specifically targeted duplexes, we would have to write those regulations. We don't have them now. But yes, we would target owners as opposed to corporate, yeah, corporate buyers. Yeah.
Yeah, well, just kind of, that was kind of it. Like I'd rather see, you know, house hackers, you know, building a duplex that live there and then rent the other one out, prioritize over individual investors who are building, you know, small sole proprietorship or whatever, over corporate. So I guess just like a tiered like preference for ready or investments.
Yeah, and we'll have to talk about if there is, I mean, we have to look at, right now, we don't have a program like this specifically targeted to duplexes in our HRA budget. We'll have to see how we can work it in.
So I, assuming we're talking about subsidy, I agree with what's been said, but we're not talking about owner occupancy requirements more than duplex. Like if you build with your own land, you don't live there or not?
No, there are no, there would be no owner occupancy.
Okay. And my question is what happens with this in relation to the existing ADU rules? Would you still be eligible to build an ADU in addition to your duplex? Do you comply with the owner occupancy rule or?
Question. I don't know that, do you have any lines on that? You know, I think if you are building duplex plus ADU, it would have to be a whole lot of them before you really start to exceed the density allowed by the COW Plan. So I don't really see any reason why we would specifically exceed it not. You're only allowed to have one ADU per lot. So this would be in essence a way to allow triplexes.
sparked by the question that was asked about investors. So if you wanted to have, do we have rules for like a bed and breakfasts and those type of things in Richfield?
We do.
So if somebody builds a duplex, they can rent out the other side as a bed and breakfast or how does that all work together?
We would consider, we have rules for bed and breakfasts and I believe those are a conditional use. I'd have to look it up. I don't, we haven't had one come in in a long time. I know that they're addressed and I'm almost positive it's as a conditional use. So in theory, you could build a duplex and then come in and ask for permission to put a bed and breakfast on one side? Yes, but you'd need permission.
I just, I don't know if it is appropriate. I guess my first question is for staff. Is, is the open question around, around triplexes, is how complicated would that be to tie into this? And then if it is not, if it could be tied into the current process, I'm curious from other policymakers if there's interest in that, allowing those above a certain lot size or something.
Yeah, so from staff perspective, those types of uses are talked about in the comprehensive plan, but we don't have a good model for it. And so I think that right now, our priority is getting something adopted and doing this work and getting it on the books. I, you know, if folks are open to looking at triplexes and stuff, we can certainly put it on the list. But I think it's important to adopt this now and, and then as work allows, consider more.
I'm comfortable with that and just holding, putting it on the back burner.
Yep.
Are there comments or questions from folks? Or your guests?
Thank you, Mary. I heard consensus on all of these points except for, I heard consensus on not having the garage be protruding, but not the, the details of it. So I'm just curious, I heard from Councilmember Heyford, oh, Larry, Councilmember Wayland, but I was wondering if others have opinions on that, whether it needs to be flush or you're okay with it being, the flush being five feet.
Yep, it's the, is it the habitable space that you wanted to align with? Or are you okay with the Minneapolis-Roseville model where it allows the garage to come out five feet? What, and whether that, and actually, Councilmember Wayland's was that it's allowed to come out in, with a porch as opposed to just a blanket five-foot allowance and flush.
I'm comfortable with the more permissive option.
Especially since we are seeing homes in Richfield with that big porch and protruding garage. I'm fine with it. I'm just allowing it.
Allowing the five-foot in run for the porch extension?
Flush with the porch instead of the five-foot.
And I am not, so I'm in the camp with Councilmember Heyford, oh, Larry, and Commissioner Sturza.
I would say.
My flush, I want to clarify that I mean habitable space. Yes, yes. Okay, okay.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
Habitable space, would that be the furthest point of habitable space or the minimum? So like if there's a, say there's the front door and then on the side, there's a portion of the house, say the front bedroom or something, it's not the same.
Well, it would be habitable space.
Just any habitable space, okay.
A porch would not be considered habitable space, but any habitable space. Yes.
But like the door could be set back between the garage and the bedroom.
Yeah, so there's bedrooms at 20 feet, garage at 20 feet, and then the front door is at 25 foot.
Yes, it could be.
That would be okay in the flush situation?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one thing I want to mention because you're comparing to Minneapolis. Minneapolis does have like other unusual requirements that we do not impose. For example, you're not allowed to park in front of your house at all, like in your own driveway. It needs to be parked behind the house. So there are other things we're doing that are more permissive to homeowners and I think it's maybe reasonable that we're a little bit stricter. We also have a lot more houses with front driveways, so it's maybe more important here than it is in Minneapolis where they almost all have alleys. So I continue to defend my position. I appreciate that, yeah, it is a common floor plan and I understand some of the flexibility that I think is worth standing up for.
It seems about split.
I don't think I share. My, my vote would be flush personally, just given the housing stock of primarily ramblers of the 50s kind of flats to that extent.
I don't have really strong feelings because I think by limiting it so that it's 50% or less, it solves a lot of the problem. I think what we're worried is having this humongous garage and then a little tiny door in the back. The other thing I think will solve a lot of that problem.
Yeah. Well, I, again, I don't hear a strong consensus on this one. So why don't you let us take a look some more and, and make a proposal? Spread this needle. You know, maybe you're, maybe it's that the porch has to come out beyond the front of the garage. There has to be some architectural element that is coming out beyond the front of the garage. Let, let's take a look and we'll do some measurements on those recent homes, see what that actually is, what that setback is.
I'll just make some comments. This is just from my perspective of being on the council almost six years. And, and so it's a very limited perspective, but I'm just really excited and proud of the awesome work that this council and our staff and our commissioners have done together to really diversify our housing options and prioritize affordability and diversity of types. We've, you know, that was talked about for a long time. The city has picked up momentum. Staff has just done such a great job of helping pave the way. And we are clearly over that hump where we couldn't get, what am I comps, you know, for different types of housing in the city for a very long time. It was very hard and it was this chicken and egg issue. And now I just feel like we have the ability to and we have been exploring really innovative, different types of housing types and options that so many other cities are not doing, whether it's around accessibility, affordability type. And we've been building it. And I'm, I'm just very thankful to see, like to have this conversation, to see really great diversity of, of options for our residents. Because I remember being in conversations years back where it's like, we can't get comps for anything and, and this is really hard. And we're well past that. And so I, I just am really happy we're here. That's, that's all I want to say. Other comments? All right, I will adjourn our work session. Everybody. Everybody.
Thank you. And it's done.
Mary, I was waiting for you to be the.
I know.
Welcome to the tiebreaker.
Welcome to our.